Meeting to order. All board members are present and accounted for. If so inclined, would you please stand, face our flag over in this direction as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have one item on our special board meeting this evening, and that is the tennis court discussion. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. So, we don't have special meetings very often here, and I think we can probably, some of us can count them on one hand. They come only at select times. During the course of the evening, we'll have discussion among board members and information from a couple of our employees to help us just get as much info as we possibly can. There will be no public forum this evening. We will save that for our 6/26 meeting, our June 26 time. And just as a word, at the public forum time, when it is time, we would ask that if people want to speak to that, they coordinate their efforts so we don't have 20 people speaking and maybe it's redundant from time to time. So if and when that time comes, just two or three speakers would be great. At that time, we'll also take a vote. There'll be no voting tonight, just discussion. Jerry's going to lead us in facility conversation in just a moment. We had a facility meeting where, and I think that kind of directs why we're here this evening. But I do want to address the city just a bit. I've used the term non-committal when it comes to city and city politics in reference to the tennis courts. To me, non-committal means you haven't committed to a thing. But I think that's fair to say that we had a meeting with them, and if we're giving them nothing to discuss, like an option, they have every right not to be committal to anything. We haven't given them more than one topic. We haven't given them alternatives. So if that in fact comes from me, that there seems to be some conversation, that the city has been negative about it, I apologize for that because it may very well come from me. What we want to do more than anything else is have a good working relationship with the city or a continuance of that working relationship, which has been excellent through the years. So we need to throw that out. This evening, I would like us to start with some facility conversation by Jerry as to what developed at that meeting, which kind of precipitates why we're here. I'm also going to ask Dave, our operations man, and Jake to have some discussion about the need for tennis courts. Dave, the funding or monetary commitments that we would be looking at based on what options we might have. So I thought we'd start with Jerry because the reason why we're here is the facility committee and probably no clear consensus that came out of that meeting. Jerry?
If I can even back up further than the last meeting, I'll even go back as far as 2015.
Correct.
About when this conversation actually originated.
Yep.
And Rob was actually at facilities back then as well. We knew there was issues with the tennis courts. There was severe cracking and sinking, especially on the south end, four courts. We did a walk through, Rob and I, and Dave and Jake, and we knew at that time something needed to be done. And really, the root cause at that time was we were losing a lot of that court because of the retaining wall and the way that was all installed. So the original fix was to remove the retaining wall and try to get that fixed. Was there, I can't remember, did we do some patching then, filling in some of the cracking?
No. No, just did the retaining wall, and we took a little bit of the exterior of the asphalt away where the retaining wall was because it was just collapsing, so we just cut it off.
Right. Right. Since, oh, obviously since, nothing's really been invested into the tennis courts on the upkeep. Hence, the way they are now is, for the most part, unplayable. The four courts, the four north courts are your best courts. I don't know, I wouldn't consider them being competitive level courts, which since moved us forward to several tennis court meetings over the past six months, for sure. Actually, it starts back in 2015, but it's, over the last six months, it's really picked up headway on it. So there was a facilities meeting, oh, three, two weeks ago?
It's all dated in the, I think it's the date on the...
Ah, 6-1. And there are, there are a number of people. There's the facilities committee essentially was involved, and there's probably seven or eight people in that group. And as you see in front of you, there were really three options laid out. And I won't say it was a per se vote taken, but really, the consensus in the room was really a split consensus. That's probably the best way I could put it. You know, obviously, everybody would like to see it fixed. Obviously, the other elephant in the room is the funding. And a big part of the issue with some of the funding is if we're looking at doing essentially a temporary repair with no warranty on it for $70,000, it's, to a lot of them, it's hard to justify when we just reduced $88,500 in expenditures to balance a budget. So that's where a lot of discrepancy is. If we're taking, if we're cutting our budget to suffice our, or if we're cutting our expenditures to suffice the budget, how can we possibly afford to spend $70,000 with no kind of guarantee on it? So that was one of the options. The other option is, you know, can we afford the $10,000 a year for tennis courts, $70,000 for the next seven years until they can resurface again? So we're going to have really a short-term investment with no guarantee, and then seven years from now or five years from now, we're going to invest another $240,000 or $80,000, probably even more than that then to redo the whole works. That was one of the others. You know, we know there's some grading issues. And one of the concerns was, you know, that elementary school, they fundraised $36,000 on their own without coming to the school for a new playground that 500 kids a day use. And essentially, tennis is 22 kids. Give or take, right Jake?
Yeah.
So there was, there were some big concerns there for obvious reasons. And then one of the other options would, would we not do some resurfacing this year in the parking lots and move that funding to the tennis courts? And I don't know that that's such a good option personally because you start getting away from that, and you're, then your parking lots and your, your roadways start getting bad, and that just costs, just will continually increase massively as we run out through Red Wing.
Okay.
So, so that's really, that's really what brought us to this meeting today is to have more discussion on tennis courts.
What I'd like to do is be as orderly as we can and listen to the people we call on, and then we can ask a variety of questions after that. So Dave, I ask you just to speak to the costs and what brings us here. I think originally, we talked about a total demolition and rebuild, and now there's at least some conversation that we'd be able to have workable tennis courts for the next few years with a resurfacing project. Can you speak to any of that?
Yeah, well, like Jerry had stated, this started a couple of years ago. The, you know, the original problem was the collapsing retaining wall, which we had to repair first before we even considered doing any resurfacing. We did that, we took care of that problem. And when we originally had got some quotes, we were looking at, you know, just getting some budgetary numbers for the spring to start looking at what we were going to do. We got those ballpark numbers. It was done in January, so we weren't holding them to anything. But of course, other things came up, other repairs. We had a major construction project. So by the time we were serious about getting those bids again, we had the contractors come back out and take a very close look, detailed, put together a detailed proposal. And at that time is when we realized that the courts were in a little rougher shape than we had originally thought. The gentleman that came out, we had a couple of different companies came, come out. We called, I think, at least four, two came out, and they were more than happy to do the job, but at the same time, they were also informing us that they were in really bad shape. They wanted to be clear that they weren't going to guarantee anything with the size of the cracking and with the pooling happening, the water holding in some of the areas, but it could be done. They always said it could be resurfaced, you know, at the cost of around $70,000. We also have problems with the posts. I want that to be clear too. It's not just the court, it's also the posts that go into the ground that are bent and heaving and having some issues. So that cost was part of that proposal. And with looking at the inflated price, which, you know, the original price was already something to be concerned about, now it's getting even higher. And the comment I got from both these companies, which are well-known reputable companies that do this all over, they said, "Well, boy, you're already into it for 70. If you do it this way, you're probably halfway there just replacing them." Just speaking in general terms. They didn't know what the amount would be at that time. So that's when I asked them, "Well, can you get me a quote together for complete replacement?" If that's, because I figured the question would come up if we had the option. That's where I got the quote for complete demolition. I didn't pursue several quotes on the complete demolition at that point. We were already having trouble discussing and coming up with the money for the 70, $75,000. I surely wasn't going to have contractors come in for anywhere from 280 to 300,000 up when it just, to me, didn't seem like an option. And, you know, I just, I just wanted, I just wanted something in writing so we knew somewhat what it would be. At one point, I, to be honest with you, I just didn't think we were going to be able to come up with the money. I thought it was kind of an issue that was going away. We were worried about other projects, and it's kind of resurfaced, and, you know, here we are. We did have another gentleman come out that says that he can do the repair. He met with me and Jake. We both liked the methods that he had for the crack repair. It seemed like a, you know, it would make the courts playable. The reason we never had the option for just doing half the courts was because of our teams competing, they still wouldn't be able to do home matches. And that was really our, you know, a big part of why we want to get these done is not only for the public to have nice courts, but for the home tennis team to be able to have home matches instead of having all-away matches. So we didn't really use that as an option of just doing half of them, just because it really wasn't going to fix the complete problem. So looking at the new proposal that the gentleman gave Jake, it's about $75,000. It replaces a couple of the posts, but not all of them. And it's, once again, it's, I guess I consider it somewhat of a temporary fix. We're going to have to revisit either resurfacing in the near future, or if we continue to have any settling problems or any issues, we may be looking at complete demolition at some point. I don't know. It depends on Mother Nature, the weather, rain, freezing, I just don't know. Either way, as you're going forward, a plan needs to be put in place for if you're going to continue to resurface, keep them as is, or if you're going to look at the option of complete demolition and starting over again.
Can I ask for a little clarification? The number one question I'm asked is, why have you always earmarked $45,000? That comes from that original 2015.
Correct.
It was January, a lot of it was covered, but I just really want everyone to understand why, I don't know tennis courts, but that's why I plugged that number in. It's always been $45,000 because that's what we were told in 2015. It is in that red book.
Which is why we got that call originally, to get that number to budget it.
Yep. Okay. I just wanted that clarity out there because it probably is the number one question I'm asked.
Was there any warrants during the last person to look at them?
No.
Still no warrant.
All vendors said the same thing. You're not going to get a warranty on this with the condition of the courts.
Let's, let's jump to Jake, and I, one of the questions, or one of the statements that's been made is, our tennis team isn't very big. And I contend that there's other users besides that, which makes it a little bit different, but I don't know that for sure. Can you, can you talk a little bit about users of the courts?
Yeah, I mean, there's, we have our tennis team, obviously, that uses it through the fall. We do tennis lessons throughout the summer. We got a couple of different coaches out for tennis lessons in the summer. And then not to mention the group of adults who use it oftentimes in the mornings or at night will be out there playing. I think Paul mentioned that they've actually moved off of them as well because of the condition of them, they'll drive to Red Wing. So it hasn't been used as much there either, but there was a large community group who was using them. And you see kids out there a lot, you know, oftentimes, sometimes when I come to these meetings, there's kids out there playing, and they're lit, and FIAID uses them often, whether it's for tennis or for the other pickleball they play out there and some other activities they play on those courts too, so.
I'd like to open it up to the general board here for any questions or statements. Kurt?
My first question is, when we look at option two guys, when it says, can we afford $10,000 a year to have the tennis courts up to $70,000 for seven years? Is that, we're expecting to put $10,000 into it each year for seven years?
No, that's just one of those things, a statement that was made at the facility meeting.
Okay.
We would have to pay for it upfront.
Okay, gotcha.
What's the difference between option two and option three on this shooter? Because...
Option two is just kind of the discussion of, you know, do we hold off? Option three would be to move forward with the resealing. Option two is hold off, we made $85,000 worth of cuts, hold off on them. So actually, very different.
I guess...
Do we hold off on doing it?
So, option one, the option two, the three?
Option one would be the recommendation that's currently on the table right now, which is the girls all playing away games or meets, is that what they call meets? So option one is what's currently on the...
I'm doing nothing.
Well, and then waiting a year, maybe people can fundraise, you know, give everyone kind of some time to fundraise some of those things.
Is there a possibility, and I don't know, Jerry, with the committee, can there be a possible option four where, what is the least amount we need to do to make them playable? I know the surface is lifting, but if you're to have someone come in and just blow up the cracks and fill them in, and that's it, you know, you can't do that.
The lowest possible option are the options we're presenting, and that's because the surface that's below it is peeling and coming up. It's very dangerous.
Too dangerous to slip on.
Yep, so that's not an option.
This last guy actually said the peeling is his bigger issue that he has than the cracking, yeah.
Which, which I agree with. I think that is. I mean, you could play around the cracks, but that peeling...
What's it take to lift that up? I'm just questioning, what does it take to lift that up? A lot of places, it's loose, but you're coming with a scraper of some kind to lift that?
There's pressure washing, there's actual sanding of sanding it off. There's a few different options depending on which company and what they prefer to do. Some say that the sanding maybe leaves swirl marks and stuff people don't like. It's preference on how they want to get it off, as long as it comes off. So you can, you know, prep is 90% of the game here, being able to prep the surface to have a good surface put back on top of it.
Yeah. We can't go down to that last surface because that's terrible underneath that. That's why it's been resurfaced already, correct?
Yes. So we've got a $75,000 bid. Some time ago, when we were doing Wastito, that money was generally earmarked for those tennis courts. We run into a compressor problem, we take 20 grand right off the top of that, but in my mind, we had $45,000 that was committed toward whatever was necessary for those courts. Am I mistaken? Is that...
Are you saying we have $45,000 earmarked in the budget for the courts, right?
That was with the sale of Wastito. Of Wastio, $45,000 of it was set aside for the tennis courts.
So that's still funds we have even after the...
That's correct. I'm carrying over, I'm holding on where they're at.
Then we have an offer by the fire department with a donation.
Correct, yes.
Are we paid to say that?
Yes.
Of $2,500. So we're close to two-thirds of the total that we need. Now, we haven't had any in-depth conversation with, with the city, but yet I might as well throw out an opinion. My opinion is that we're not just a, a school only on situations like this. The city, people come to use our facility. We go out there and we tell them when we get, when we get a new field house that it's user-friendly, even if sometimes it isn't. So we asked that of the community, and now I, my opinion is we should seriously consider paying that back at some level. I think we've got the majority of our funds. It doesn't mean they're, you know, we don't have other priorities, but it isn't like we haven't earmarked that money in that location already. We just have to find an opportunity to find more. Like the city, you know, budgetary things are crucial, but I think we made a commitment at some point in time, so now you can throw darts this way. No?
Well, I think, like you said before, we need to give the city what our expectations or whatever our requests would be, and I think having them pay a third is fair because the community's using it as much as the students as much as the school. And the community members shouldn't have to drive to Red Wing to play tennis. I mean, that's only how these courts are built, is about the understanding that it would be for the community as well as the school. I have the city contributed then, I don't know the amount or the ratio, but...
$50,000.
Was that half or what was the ratio?
$50,000 of 250. It's in the red book.
Okay. So I guess we need to determine how much we would need to ask the city for, or they won't act on it.
One of the reasons why we're here and we had to hold a special meeting is that we've got some time constraints here. We have to make decisions about whether the team, that particular group that uses it, the tennis team, is going to play all their away matches, or do we have time to get us on the schedule for resurfacing? So it's something that we do need to deal with. And with the city as a possible player, we're asking them to jump into the pool with us right away. I'm not, I'm not sure they're prepared to do that, but at the same time, to get a commitment that, yes, we're interested in helping out would sure go a long way toward, toward being able to get the project done. I just think by the first of, by the first of July, we need to know something.
You know, when we look at, if they're not going to be able to play on it now, Jake, for competition, is it safe for them to even practice on?
That's a very good question.
You know, I mean, it's, seems like that's, you know, that can be a liability too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, are we set that they have to play away games next year? Is that...
You know, I talked to everybody on the schedule, said this is a possibility, we might have to play at your place, so they're aware of it. I haven't officially moved it yet, but it's, right now, it's our only option.
So long, shall we need a couple of points at five?
What?
We do, but very, very rarely do we get a bid that doesn't have an up along the way. I don't know if we put any contingency monies in a project. You're saying we've only, they're not going to, they're not going to fix all the standards. We certainly would want all those...
That's in the bid.
Fixing all the poles?
Oh, that's in the bid.
No, the new, the new bid, that gentleman thought that just about a couple of them needed to be fixed. The original bid was resurfacing and replacing all of them.
Once again, it's a, it's a kind of a Band-Aid to be able to get through, to get it operational and not, not have the cost go up anymore. This, this, this particular individual's resurfacing is a little bit more than the original bids by about $5,000, $5,000 or $6,000. But I think me and Jake both agree, we really liked the way that he did the crack filling. The method that he was using looked superior to what we've seen before and looked, in our eyes, a little more permanent and would probably last a lot longer. So of course, the question is, is when it comes to seven years from now, how do you redo that? I guess we don't know.
You know, we keep talking about a Band-Aid, and with any of our facilities, I mean, a tennis court's supposed to be resurfaced every seven years anyways, or five to seven years, just like a track. We really don't have a plan in place for that right now anyway, so we do need to invest in these things. So it's not like we're throwing 70, 70 grand at this right now just to do it again in a couple more years. You'd have to do that either way. Maybe not 70 grand, it might be 40 grand, it might be 45 grand, but it's part of having these things, you know?
When was the last time it was resurfaced?
Before my time here, and I started in '09.
2007 was the last resurfacing. They did crack filling and resurfacing. So you're at 10.
So I understand...
Three years over, if they recommend. Yeah, that's what we do, and that's kind of his license, that's what he's...
Rob?
Just so I understand the process we're talking about, filling the cracks and then putting down what, another inch or two on top of what exists for the resurfacing? What exactly are they doing?
They would take it down.
They would cut the top layer off, fill the cracks.
Remove the layer on top that's peeling and coming up.
Okay.
They would do their process for crack repair.
When you say layer, the asphalt or just the paint?
Just, it wouldn't, they're not taking the asphalt off.
Okay, just the covering.
Yep, yep. They'll do their crack filling process, and once that's done, they'll resurface over the top of everything again.
But it's probably an inch or so.
Don't know the, I doubt it's that thick. You know, it's, it's a paint-type process, it's specifically for tennis courts, so it's not really thick.
So the resurfacing is not asphalt, resurfacing is the new paint?
Correct.
And the 280 is taking all the asphalt away, re-putting down the asphalt, and then repainting?
Correct.
Plus the surface, subsurface too, right?
Yeah.
Repacking, repairing, and putting down a completely new surface.
And then after that, after that cures, then they put on a whole new, we'll call it a painted surface, to make your courts and make your lines and stuff like that.
Why is the number seven keep popping out all the time? There was an email going around about a seven-year warranty. There was a seven-year conversation here. What is that number mean?
The only thing seven year for me is the average time that you need to resurface. That's the only thing that I know. I mean, I know between me and Jake, we've never said anything about a seven-year warranty because that would be, that'd be a very difficult thing to get.
I think we're going to talk to that lady that does the grants, she's so knowledgeable. She said anytime it's a raised surface, you're always going to run into issues sooner than a flat surface that was kind of pre-done and not going to be around water and things like that, trees kind of overhanging. She talked about longevity being, you know, different years, but seven is kind of the golden standard, but if, if on a lower surface and a non-raised surface, that's all man-made, all of that, you know, that brought in.
Yep, that whole area was built up. And I'll be honest with you, was that 17 years ago?
Something like that, yeah.
It held out pretty darn good. I mean, we, considering how long it's been, it held out pretty darn good. You know, and we keep talking about $70,000 in seven years from now. We're saying that because of the condition that it's in now. If you went for an option where you did replace it, you would probably get your resurfacing done less than that because now you have the new surface. So I want everyone to keep that in mind. It's not 70, 75,000 on any surface that you have there, it's 70, 75,000 because of the surface that we currently have. And of course, we don't know the inflation of prices and labor and all that stuff too, so.
And the seven-year warranty, that's never been talked about in open discussion in any of the meetings, not even at our board meetings. It's always been stated that it's been no warranty. And this is the third or fourth time for sure that we've talked about it, and in all, it's been brought to me every single meeting, that $70,000 temporary fix of no warranty, right?
It's a whole seven. I listened to the voicemail of the guy who came and looked at it, and I said, "How long would you expect?" Because he said, "There's no warranty." I said, "How long, ballpark, what would you expect?" He said, "He said five years if you're really picky, seven to eight for sure. If you're not picky, 10," you know, was his guess. So it's what we're hoping for.
Has there been any reference checks on the surface itself?
Yeah. I called, White Bear Lake High School is the one that I talked to, and they, they said it's a, it's a good option instead of ripping them out. Not perfect, but it's a good option.
Well, so we, we resurfaced after seven years, and then now it's been 10 years. So maybe we could assume that it could last another seven years, or we could take a risk that it would, but that's the average.
We could, but it probably wasn't in that bad a shape that number of years ago either. This is in pretty rough shape.
It's not that bad.
Well, it wouldn't have been seven years old though, if I said it was 10 years old, it's still 17. old, it's still seventeen?
I sometimes think about too, were the, if, if it wasn't for the safety issues with practice now and, and if you could manage to do the tennis meets someplace else, would you give it a year to see what type of fundraising you could do and see how close you are to that amount to do everything? You know, what are the options with the city possibly and talking to other groups and is there not a possibility that next year something like this could be done based upon the funds that were raised?
I have a question for Derek. Do you, how long did it take you guys to, to raise that amount of money?
Forty thousand.
The forty thousand for the elementary playground?
Well, overall, it took us about two years.
Okay.
And that was because we needed to research fundraisers, get them on board, uh, you know, have discussions about it. But really, we raised it in one year.
Okay.
You know, it was, it was actually three weeks, uh, that we raised it. But, you know, again, it's an entire elementary school.
Right.
But, yeah.
How did we raise that money initially? Built them up as part of a, another...
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, you know, we're, we're still, even though we had the forty-five thousand dollars built in the budget based on 2015, we're still twenty-seven thousand, five hundred charged, but we've already cut eighty-eight-five out of the curriculum to balance the budget. Where do we come up with the other twenty-seven, five?
I think the principals' desks and chairs can go.
I, I guess I understand the right size and we reduce budget, but we face that every year. You know, if next year we face another reduction or, or correction and you need to resurface the parking lot, we put that on hold or if we, if a chiller goes out, do we not fix that or, you know, so there's always going to be the yin and the yang of the, this is what we need and this is what we've got. I guess I, I'm reading this over and looking at the right size and, and I don't discount what the principals are saying in the budget cuts, but to me, it is really almost two different issues completely. And I think we've felt, and I think you and I talked about this a couple of years ago, Jerry, we've felt where when you don't take care of your facilities where they should be, what happens?
They're gonna fail.
And they fail even more and they're more expensive. So, I, I almost think this is two issues. I understand the, the finance is one and the curriculum and everything, but if we've got facilities that we have to maintain, we're talking about periodic maintenance, and when you get right down to it, it's fixing things that aren't broken possibly before they break. And that saves money. So, I, I, I'm just thinking that this, if we're gonna keep it, I guess that's maybe one of the first questions, if we're gonna keep that, that's just like keeping the track, keeping the chillers, keeping everything else that's a part of the facilities, we should treat it like that then and put it in where it's gonna be. If we're not gonna keep it, then yeah, don't spend any money on it. But I also think on a second note, if we're serious about getting this thing taken care of and we're talking about fundraising and the board feels that fundraising is appropriate, I suppose if we commit seventy-five thousand, forty-five out of what we already have, there's another twenty-seven. To me, that says, there's your goal this year, fundraise twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and show how good this is. You know?
And I would agree with that option.
I don't know if we have to have the money fundraised before we do it or not. I'm just throwing it out there as a discussion. That's what I've been thinking. It's like, well, how committed is the community? Can they raise twenty-seven thousand, five hundred, which it's less, but, you know, we might be, I don't know what kind of pool we'll have to draw from for that. You know, if we've got people in the community who want tennis courts, we give them the opportunity. And we talked about that two years ago. Do we get the public to fundraise themselves because they do use it?
Right. I think there's other organizations out there that are talking about it too, that are looking at contributing, you know? But bear in mind, if we don't do it the summer, which would be, reality would be, we'd be lucky to have somebody come and resurface it before our school starts. That's reality.
Well, with this last guy, he, he has us penciled in. I told him that nothing is certain. He knew that we're gonna have this meeting and it very well could be shot down, but he allowed us to be penciled in because he knew that everybody wants it done by the second week in August, so.
But if, if it doesn't happen this year, next year, if we decide to do it for next year, the costs are gonna go up. So keep that in mind.
Oh, and, and between ten and seven, uh, that's just that. If we're gonna say every seven years, no matter what we do, we're gonna spend money, then we need to budget ten thousand a year for seven years for the next fix and then ten thousand a year for the next seven and that's just a continuous cycle.
Right.
Of somehow.
But we need to, somewhere along the way, we're gonna need to take that consideration for the track and for the field else as well.
Well, and, and that's, I mean, it's kinda like the parking lot and everything else seems to be redone. How do we put that into facilities, plan this out, take track this year, parking lots this year, tennis court maybe some of this?
And on the twenty-sixth, you will see your five, your, um, it's actually six because you're adding this year on, but, um, you know, you've got that all laid out and see how that's...
I'm just real nervous that if we have forty-five thousand dollars, we've been earmarking for several months. At one time it was sixty-five thousand and we had an immediate need, out, out goes twenty. By this time next year, we won't have that forty-five, that would be guaranteed. There's, there's other things that pop up, so I'm hearing what you're saying here for sure.
Can I read the, we write size for athletics, I guess, explain that a little bit more? What, how could or would?
Next year, um, we know that we have a kindergarten of sixty-six and a first grade of around seventy-four. We know that those sections will have to go to three. It's just, it's right sizing, no one's, you know, we're not reducing, but you need to go with what your class sizes are. With that, we have fallen to number seven in the H-valley as far as size. We, we are not growing, you know? And with that, typically schools are size and even in the H-valley currently, it's really hard to find teens that have tennis. And with us getting smaller and smaller, um, we know that we'll have two grade levels that will have to be right-sized, which usually means three sections. Uh, we also know that one athletic group usually goes along with that to right-size everything. You have to have enough athletes to have sports. That doesn't mean it's gonna be tennis. We have no idea of knowing. Uh, I think you need to wait till next year. But with what, the money that came in this year at two and two percent and your class subsidy for special education being four oh four, it's gone. We haven't even entered negotiations yet with teachers and we know we're in a teaching crisis right now. So, um, by right-sizing, what we mean is next year we will have to look at that. Everything has to be appropriate. You've got sixty-six kids and they're in four sections. We can't maintain that. So, um, with that, we don't, we have too many sports for the number of students we have, but that is by no means mean it's tennis. I mean, that is a conversation you'll have to have next year.
I think it's a, a conversation you should start now.
Perhaps.
What is...
But that's why we are starting it. I mean, the conversation has been started that we know we're right-sizing next year. That if, if Derek and Tim were here, they would tell you Jennifer's here. It's a lot of our conversation at admin. What will that look like? We are preparing a year out. So, I hope that answers your question.
It, it does. I mean, there's no real answer yet for what this right size on athletics look like. To me, that was kind of the curiosity and something that sounds like the whole process as far as how do we realign it to the size of our school district? And I'm just curious what that looks like, so.
Kind of the coaches, how dangerous is it out there right now on the courts?
You wouldn't play a match out there. It's okay to do some drilling out there, but we're like, have to play competitively at any level.
Can you, can you really play to your potential to get better if you're not, you know what I'm saying?
We gotta do what we're provided with, so, yeah, that's what we have up there, so that's what we can do to practice on as best we can.
What else do we have for the cause here?
Dr. I guess I don't know the best, best approach. Do we wanna see if the community is interested in fundraising? I guess I don't really know how you go about that.
Well, I, I know that they would wanna be added to your agenda to do that. I know we've got some great tennis supporters in the room and I know, they know the rules. They can't go out and start fundraising now, um, but they, I think they would be up for that.
Well, our, but our timetable is somewhat limited here. If we don't get it done soon or don't commit to getting it done soon as a board, we're gonna have to wait. That's plain and simple and then that whole dynamic again changes, so.
I will say that if you decide to do it this year, which is totally fine, Dave knows that we will put off, um, we will have to take it from facilities. You can't go to another account, you can't start moving this around. Uh, so resurfacing of the, um, parking lots would have to be bumped down. If, if you fund the whole thing, that would have to wait. Even if there's fundraising, they pay that back, then you could go ahead and do your um, resurfacing, but just know that this year, and like I said, on the twenty-sixth, you'll see the whole plan, uh, laid out, but that would have to be reduced.
And again, we're talking about, um, the school handling this all internally themselves. Again, we need to continue our conversation with the city to see what, what type of commitment, if any, they can make to us. If we wait for that to happen, um, it'll be again next year because we can't ask them to just drop everything you're doing and commit to something. It would be nice to get a, a favorable review from them, at least to understand that they're willing to assist us and that would be, um, I guess channels that the superintendent would take over, at least getting conversation and, and seeing how willing they are to do that. But again, I'm just very nervous about that forty-five because a third of it's started at sixty-five and, um, will it be there when we need it?
Yeah, and I'm not a Batman, but if you move forward with doing the project and go to the city, look for a commitment, I guess a decision's gonna have to be made. But we truly know what's gonna happen. Yes or no? Right now, it's not committal, as you said, because we have nothing to really commit to. If they disagree to commit, then we don't say it's truly gonna commit to nothing. True. If they go, "Well, let's wait another year." Okay, we told you, then you told you commitment if you're not doing it.
Initially, they paid ten percent basically. They paid fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, so if we need twenty-five thousand, twenty-seven thousand, they'd have to go to spot five thousand. I mean, if we're gonna ask them for ten percent, we'd ask them for five thousand.
They paid us fifty, that's twenty percent.
You said they paid us fifty thousand, fifty thousand up to a year.
Up to two fifty, back in two thousand. And you, I think you have to keep in mind, I mean, I, I feel for them too. They're in the same exact situation. I mean, if you were at their, their meeting last night, I mean, they're, they're struggling too. They're trying to make things to meet up too, so. Um, I will say, Ms. Abadil, who's here tonight, she, um, was really good and resourceful at giving us some grants that we can look into. The problem we run into grants is resurfacing is considered upkeep. What they love to give grants to is new facilities, you know, boys and girls clubs and starting something. Jake and I were really excited because there was one I thought was gonna be perfect, but it has to be enclosed. You know, they like those year-round type facilities. There is some really great money out there for tennis. I mean, I was actually really surprised. But as far as a resurfacing, I mean, they act like this is just no big deal. It was really hard to find anything. Because what I felt I heard from the city was, "Go find some funds and we'll, we'll help match it maybe, depending on how much you could get." It looked like we could get a twenty thousand dollar, uh, uh, yeah, twenty thousand dollars if we were gonna do the whole thing over again, because that could be considered new construction. But with it just going to this resurfacing, so I do wanna stand up for them. They were very supportive in the fact that maybe there's some matching funds out there. Go see what you can get. And like I said, they want new, they love boys and girls clubs, they love, you know, so much, um, tennis probably has more money than other organizations, but not for what we're doing here.
If one percent, seventy-five thousand would be fifteen thousand. So they can give us five thousand or fifteen thousand?
And that's why I'm just saying that I, the, when we went to Public Works, what I heard was if we could get some, maybe they would match. So, um, I think it would be great to go back.
Yeah, we're putting in thirty-five.
Yeah, as a match.
I think it would be worth going to them and, you know, the fire department is donating twenty-five hundred and, and maybe some other organization gets another twenty-five hundred and we went in with five thousand, asking them to match that five thousand would be very realistic. I think that sounds better than coming in and saying, "Hey, you wanna pay a third?" Because, um, they're really struggling with their budget as well, so.
So if we did get that, then where would we come up with the other?
Well, like I said, we would have to, um, Dave would have to pick which lot he wants to do. Um, the nice thing about doing all your lots at one time, um, just like anything in your home, you put shingles on half your house, you've gotta call the company back to the next year to do the other side. I mean, it just, it always works out well if you do it all at once. And we are, I think, tagging up the same time the city is doing some of their resurfacing, so the equipment's already here, I'm not sure if we're aligning that or not. But Dave would have to hold off on the resurfacing of the entire parking lot.
How bad are the parking lots?
Bad.
Bad?
How much were you budgeted for the parking lots?
Seventy-five.
Yeah, seventy-five for the parking lots.
But we already have forty-five earmarked for the tennis courts, right?
Yeah, I'm saying he could do part of them.
So why couldn't you cut back that if, if, obviously the money upfront is gonna come out of the district? So if he's earmarked for seventy-five thousand, if he end up only getting forty-three thousand or whatever and that number ends up being, it's not like he couldn't do some of the resurfacing. He may have just couldn't do all the resurfacing.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, is that he'd have to decide which parking lot he wants to do.
I would almost be kind of splitting it so the next time they need to resurface, we might be able to break that up into smaller sized chunks. Instead of having the whole seventy-five thousand, you could do two parts every time over. I know it's not like a roof, cause that's connected and joined, but you do one parking lot one year, a couple years later do another parking lot, when those come due again, that's like when you replace all your windows, your furnace and your AC unit, they all go at the same time. You can stagger them for ten years.
Of course, you get behind with it. Can you get behind with it where it's like, okay, now the damage is done? You know, that's what I worry about it. Then you got something going on like the tennis courts.
I think you need a more clear understanding of exactly the conditions of the parking lots before you make that decision. You know, I have pretty detailed bids, I have photos, I have things like that. I agree with what you said, Rob. If we have it, we should maintain it. I, I completely, I, you know, if you don't, it gets worse and worse. In my eyes, in the facilities, what's gonna be the worst ripple effect and how are these costs gonna increase if we don't do them? I want everything done on a regular preventative maintenance schedule. That's my deal. I would love that. But I have to look at what's getting the most use. Where are most people? I mean, and I'm not trying to compare a parking lot between a tennis court, they're two totally different things, but how many people are coming in our school every single day, elementary, high school? How many dump trucks? How many deliveries? That effect is going to be significant compared to people playing tennis on the courts. Not making light of the fact that they need to be done, but I think we need to take a serious look at what needs to be done and what the costs are. I'm just concerned with, um, that particular subject with the parking lots. I'm just concerned, that's all.
So I have a parking lot scheduled to be moved there now?
I can't schedule them until we, nothing.
Which year, July? I think you just approved your budget. You'll, on the twenty-sixth, get your facility uploaded again, we'll get the costs and the bids and then he has to have those bids verified. The hope was to get them done before school, because that would've been in the new budget.
Yeah. And, you know, the option to be able to do partial, yes, that's, don't get me wrong, that is an option, to be able to not do them all. It's just a matter of piecing it together, um, redoing the bids because you gotta understand when you're bidding these things out, if you're bidding out a whole project, you're gonna get quite a bit of a discount compared to this little bit here, this little bit here. It changes everything, um, whi- which is fine. We can do that. I'm not, I'm not against that. It's just prioritizing where do we need to start this if we're going to piece it out? It can be done.
Can you just, what kind of fundraising can we do?
I just wonder what kind of fundraising can we do? Because I think you probably have a good response from the community with this. That's just my feeling.
Well, even bigger than that is, like, GoFundMe projects are people from all over the country that really support the idea of tennis in small towns and kind of growing grassroots things. So, something that we don't typically do for our, the fundraising that we think of in Cana Falls, I would love for them not to necessarily go directly to our community, because we're gonna have those people come forward anyway, but I think doing something like a GoFundMe, you'll have tennis organizations putting money in there.
How do we know that the people out there see that there's a need? You know, the right people, you'd say, would come, but?
It's GoFundMe, and I think people in the room know what I'm talking about. It's very effective. There's people, they get notifications every day. I belong to a couple GoFundMe, like Horse Rescue, those type of things. You'll get an email all the time on, if you click the areas that you're concerned about. So, tennis people around the country, around the world, get your, your GoFundMe.
It goes very local to that.
It spreads a lot with Facebook and things like that, if you do something like that. We try not to have teachers in our local group do that, because it's, you know, we have the Ed Foundation that's so supportive, and the PTO that's so supportive, but it's just an idea.
But if it's something, it's quick to pick, like the tennis. It might be.
Red Wing just did that with a scoreboard. Can't remember how much it was, and they're currently doing it for football uniforms too.
They're using GoFundMe?
Yeah.
And so, what you'll have is football organizations that'll go ahead and, people donate that don't even know where Red Wing, Minnesota is.
Well, again, if this was, if this was just a school issue, I would say we put it on the back burner. We need to satisfy them, the greater need, if you will, and there is a need for the resurfacing parking lot. But we're also talking about a city need here, and it's, and again, we present this to our community as a community's tennis court, not as the high school court, where the IMC belongs to us. The tennis court belongs to the community in a lot of ways, because that's what we've committed to them when we built our facility. Come see us, come use our facility. So, I just wanna make sure that people totally understand that this is part of the, part of our greater community here.
And I understand that too, but when the tennis courts went away from the dump at the Swoon Pool that the city owned, and helping us here, you know, with that being said, it's part of the community, or the city's part of the community.
I know.
Right. And then there should be a little bit of trade-off. That's my opinion. That's only my opinion.
I think there's a lot of people, I mean, I know Mayo has brought it up, I was over there for Rotary, and someone brought it up, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of people that wanna make sure tennis is around it. I don't play, but I know a lot of people that do.
Are there any other options that anyone has ever brought up other than these three? Or is this really it?
I think that summarizes what the facility could think of.
Well, there were some options for some things to put on there, but from our understanding, you can't compete on those surfaces, like the tiles.
Oh, that's right. We did, we had.
So, we did look at something else.
That we looked into, because I was really excited to see things at it, but they said recreationally used only, no, so the high school we need.
Yep.
That's right.
The purpose here tonight was to bring us all up to date on what the facility committee knows and what our operations people know. And I think we're starting to morph into redundant conversation here. So, this will be part of our regular agenda item on six twenty-six, and it'll get more discussion there, and probably in public forum, people will speak to it as well. Maybe there'll be conversation with city by then, where they'll show an interest in the project, even if it's a, yes, we're interested, at least we know where they're going with it. But we can continue this conversation at our next meeting, I think.
Well, excuse me, I would, I'd like to make sure that we do have some conversations before it makes, before we vote on this. Is there, could we attend a city council meeting or something like that?
That was last night.
Yeah.
You can ask to get that on the agenda. Typically, they ask you to go through their committees, just like ours, you know, they ask you to go through the technology committee or the.
Or be one of their committees or something.
So, I believe it's under Public Works, that's what I've typically done. Cedar is here tonight. When is the next Public Works meeting due?
Next Tuesday? Just coming Tuesday, six days?
Okay. Oh, that would be good. So, I could, I could call and see if we can get on their agenda in recap.
I can make sure you can be on the agenda.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you. So, we can, I can make sure I'm there next Tuesday for that and just kind of see, I mean, like I said, I really, they have been good about saying, you can maybe do some matching. They've never committed to anything, but I think they wanna show effort, you know, all the way around, so.
Would it be possible to have someone go out there and take a look at them as well? Maybe they have already, you know, the city engineer or someone, administrator or something?
Yeah, I believe Ron has been out there. Tom's been in and out a million times. I don't know, we could take a little tour or two sometime if you wanted to see him. I know that Ron has been out there, he's the main person.
We do have a busy agenda next week. I think I saw preliminary numbers, we're down to.
We took a few off.
Good. Do it.
Would you call it morbidly obese?
Well, you told me it was a skeleton agenda that looked obese to me. So.
You know, as we go towards this next meeting, we're gonna make a decision, and if the board decides to go with resurfacing them, great, but if we don't, something to think about in the meantime is, I think I would need some direction. If we hold off for fundraising or anything, what do I do? We've talked about a liability, I mean, do we continue? I mean, to keep them open if we don't, if we decide not to resurface right now? And I think that should be part of the discussion as we're, you know, if we do make a decision, if they're not resurfaced, what do we then do with them? Do we keep them open? Do we close them? Do we keep half of them open? What do we do?
Padlock them, is what you're saying.
They are closed right now. The south side is locked up.
No, it's not right now.
I thought at our meeting, we.
I walked into it.
We were going to, and then I was given direction to keep everything open. And so, it's open as of right now, and that's my concern.
Sure, because at our facility meeting, I thought we, we left that meeting saying we were gonna lock the south side.
Is this a liability for the district of community member?
It is. That's why I said they, when we left that meeting, the direction we had was, we were gonna lock the south side.
Which is fine. I just need to know what direction to go in, depending on how the board votes, is all.
The thing that's tough is you can't close them, else then we're gonna lock them up[1688.57]